This public hearing conducted by the Committee on Appropriations and Judications will not come to order. Notice, the public hearing was disseminated to all local media outlets by electronic format on Friday, January the 5th, 2018 with the second notice provided on Wednesday, January the 10th. Notice, the hearing was also made known on the legislative website. I also want to thank everybody for their accommodating the chair in reconvening this hearing at 3:00 so we could attend the state funeral. We have three bills on today's agenda. Bill 188-34, introduced by Senator Estevez, and two bills introduced by Senator Michael St. Nicholas. I'll have them introduce their bills as we get to them. I'll have Senator Estevez start with his bill 188.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Bill 188-34COR is an act to amend subsection 3602 of Article 6, Chapter 3, Title 16 Guam Code annotated. It's relative to the increase and recalculation of the officer vehicle inspection safety fee for the acquisition and repair of Guam Police Department patrol vehicles. Mr. Chairman, the bill proceeds to increase the fee from $15, which is, and which provides 20% or $3 to the Officer Vehicle Fund, which is known as the Police Patrol Vehicle and Equipment Revolving Fund, to $25, of which the Ovis fee will present 40% or $10 to go to that subject and special fund. Now, I just wanted to put out a couple keynotes in what's currently in the law and established with the Police Patrol Vehicle and Equipment Revolving Fund so that everybody here in the public is well aware. The Police Patrol Vehicle and Equipment Revolving Fund is not subject to the Governor's Transfer Authority. It does not lapse as it's a revolving fund, and it's specifically to be used for the acquisition, repair, and maintenance of vehicles and associated equipment for Guam Police Department, and it shall not be used for non-p patrol vehicles. Now, we have seen, we, as we all understand, in December 2017, there was, the lease did expire for at least 10 patrol vehicles currently being utilized by Guam Police Department. But what we've seen in the past is an underfunding of this revolving fund has been preventative, or has prevented Guam Police Department from acquiring new vehicles. As I understand it, and I'm sure that there would be testimony explaining this further, there's a grant that was won by Guam Police Department to purchase vehicles. Now, it's been stated in the past on lots of occasions that Guam needs to move, at least for the police vehicles, needs to move to a two-fleet system. And what the two-fleet system does, Mr. Chairman, is allows vehicles to be at max efficiency and capacity patrolling the streets filled with police officers, but allows the other half of the fleet to be in service. This, by very, by most practical standards of maintenance, will extend the life of the vehicles and the fleet, which should produce savings overall throughout the life of the vehicles, and it also ensures that we have extra vehicles in case of a catastrophic, either mechanical or other catastrophic incident with our vehicles to ensure that our officers have the equipment necessary to patrol the streets and keep our streets safe. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much, Senator. Here to testify are Chief of Police Joseph I Cruz, Bob Perron, Juan Ju Kim, and Andrew Kidigwa. So can I have it? Why don't we start with you, Chief?
Good morning, Mr. Speaker, members of the Committee on Adjudication and Appropriation. Before I start my testimony, I'd just like to introduce my staff sitting with me in the event there's any questions from any of the, any members of the committee. To my left is Major Manny Chong, my acting police commander, as well as the Bureau Chief for Operations Bureau. To my right is Major Andrew Kidigwa, the Bureau Chief for Services Bureau, and to his right is Captain Chris Castro, the Bureau Chief for my Investigations Bureau. Magu Fuanid and Hoffa Day, Mr. Speaker, and members of the Committee on Appropriations and Adjudication. I am Joseph Cruz, and I am the Chief of Police for the Guam Police Department. As I start my testimony, I would like to thank you for allowing me with the opportunity to present this testimony on behalf of the Guam Police Department, which is, which is in support of Bill Number 188-34COR, an act to amend subsection 3602 of Article 6, Chapter 3, Title 16 Guam Code annotated, relative to the increase and recalculation of the official vehicle inspection safety or Ovis fee for the acquisition and repair of the Guam Police Department's patrol vehicles. The increase would support the Guam Police Department's continuing evolution with the development of the community-oriented policing strategies to better serve our island community. The Guam Police Department vehicle fleet consists of 147 vehicles, which are utilized 24 hours a day, 365 days a year when vehicles are safe to be used. Of the 147 vehicles, 37 are police patrol cruisers. Since the enactment of subsection 3602 of Article 6, of Chapter 3, of Title 16 of the Guam Code annotated in fiscal year 2015, the Guam Police Department has collected approximately $920,844 in Ovis fees based on the current rate of 20% of the $15 safety inspection fee, which is deposited into the Police Patrol Vehicle and Equipment Revolving Fund. These funds were used for, number one, the purchase of three new patrol vehicles and eight GSA federal vehicles; two, the purchase of supplies and equipment such as pursuit lights and sirens, mobile radios for vehicles, cages for vehicles, mechanic tools needed to maintain and service fleet vehicles, miscellaneous parts for vehicles such as tires, pistons, center support bearings, spark plugs, batteries, rack and pinion, transmissions, and other like parts and equipment needed to make certain that vehicles are working properly for the safety of our officers; and lastly, number three, the procurement of parts and services from vendors for vehicles that go beyond the capacity of repairs that our mechanics can provide. Patrol vehicles that are exposed to the rigors of patrol operations with a much higher exposure to the environment normally accrue high mileage within a short, a very short time period. The Guam Police, or I'm sorry, the Guam Department of Administration General Services Agency has recommended that patrol vehicles be replaced every three years. The ideal composition of vehicles should correlate to the number of beats per precinct or division and investigative units to include a field supervisor, a community resource unit, and two standby vehicles for any unforeseen circumstances that could render a beat vehicles, a beat vehicle to be inoperable. An equivalent number of standby vehicles are also needed for the implementation of a two-vehicle fleet system. The two-vehicle fleet concept would allow for patrol vehicles to be rotated in and out of service for the recommended manufacturer preventive maintenance schedules. They would decrease the wear and tear and ensure higher patrol vehicle availability, and lastly, extend the recommended replacement from three years to four or five years. The Guam Police Department's Neighborhood Patrol Division responsibilities, and the responsibilities of the investigative units that augment our Neighborhood Patrol Division include, from the Hagana Precinct Command, seven beat areas of coverage with a current fleet inventory of 10 marked vehicles, of which two were procured through the Ovis fee; from the Dedodo Precinct Command, seven beat areas of coverage, a current fleet inventory of 13 marked vehicles, of which three were procured through the Ovis fee; Agad Precinct Command with seven beat areas of coverage with a current fleet inventory of 11 marked vehicles, of which two were procured through the Ovis fee; and lastly, Tumon and Tamuning Precinct Command with five beat areas of coverage with a current fleet inventory of 11 marked vehicles, of which only one was procured through the Ovis fee. Lastly, our investigative units that have been assigned to augment our Neighborhood Patrol Division manned five beat areas of coverage, there are no marked vehicles assigned to those units, those sections utilized unmarked vehicles. Now, Senators, for the sake of brevity, the information that I just provided only highlights the status of the marked patrol vehicles assigned to each precinct. In my written testimony, of which you have a copy of, a more detailed depiction is provided for your information. Continuing on, a total of 42 vehicles are required to adequately meet the daily operational needs of all precincts and augmenting units supporting this mission. Collectively, all precincts currently lack 31 patrol vehicles to compose an adequate daily vehicle fleet. Moreover, only 42 patrol vehicles are needed to properly implement a two-fleet system. The Guam Department of Revenue and Taxation Summary of Registered Vehicles by fiscal year noted that in FY15, there were 116,291 registered vehicles. In FY16, there were 119,303 registered vehicles, while in FY17, there were 119,906 registered vehicles. The number of vehicles registered is a one-for-one correlation to the number of vehicle safety, vehicles safety inspected. In FY16 and FY17, approximately $17,607 were collected in the Ovis fees towards the purchase of the latest 10 patrol vehicles and toward the department's related marked fleet maintenance and repair. The purchase of one patrol vehicle ranges from $41,000 to $50,000, with a trend of 10% increase in each, or in price each year, averaging $41,000 or $45,100 to $55,000. In comparison, a 5% increase in FY2018 vehicle safety inspection fees as calculated from the FY2017 rates would generate $377,704. Should GPD expend $125,000 for department-wide fleet maintenance and repair, $252,704 will fund the purchase of approximately five vehicles, which is currently inadequate to meet the operational needs of each precinct. Increasing to 40% or $10 of the proposed $25 vehicle inspection fee would generate approximately Should GPD expend $125,000 for department-wide fleet maintenance and repair, $1,134,013 will fund the purchase of approximately 22 vehicles inclusive of the 10% yearly increase for new vehicles per year. The impact on the Guam Police Department patrol operations should this legislation pass is monumental. Within the first two years, the deployment of 22 patrol vehicles would replace obsolete, unsafe, inoperable vehicles and vehicles over three years old, supporting the objective of officer safety while expanding the community-oriented policing initiatives. Within the first four years, the Guam Police Department can begin to implement a two-fleet system in line with the department's strategic plan, and within five years, the department can begin to appropriately survey patrol vehicles through the General Services Agency, allowing for a more efficient fleet. In turn, the community would realize improved response times to emergency and police service calls, increased visibility and prompt service demanded by the island we serve. Therefore, on behalf of the men and women of the Guam Police Department, we strongly support the passage of Bill 188-34COR. Seduce, masi, pare, tempo, mizo. We thank you for this opportunity to provide our comments on this bill.
I'll allow it to be the first question.
Thank you, Chief. First, I'd just like to see if we can correct the record. What we received from revenue and taxes, there were 119 vehicle inspections. I know that you have made a correlation to registrations, but just to correct the record, vehicles that are purchased within the first three years are not required to have a safety inspection, so there's not a direct correlation to registrations versus inspections. So to clear the record, it was, there were 100, 119 vehicle inspections conducted for What we got from revenue and taxation was 101,900 inspections, not registrations. So, just to correct the record on that. Chief, you mentioned that it would extend the life from three years based on GSA's recommendations to four, five years potentially if we move to a two-fleet system?
That's correct.
Now, do you have any data besides just the vehicle purchase? Because what we're talking about with preventive maintenance is primary, the mechanical aspects of the vehicle, but that doesn't take into account the installation of the cage, sirens, safety glass, and other things that aren't necessarily specific to vehicle maintenance or the lifecycle. If you were to look at this model, could you perhaps draw an inference to the cost savings regarding the installation of that, that additional equipment required specific to police vehicles? Is that something that's transferable between vehicles, or are you going to have to purchase that with every single new vehicle?
When we, when we receive a police patrol vehicle from the vendor, it comes outfitted already. So the bid specifications that I approve, that get vetted through GSA clearly delineate that, that the cost for the vehicle, whether it's $41,000 or up to $50,000, includes the costs for police radios, for cages, and, and everything else that's listed in the bid specifications. So, so all that, all those costs are already factored in to that $41,000, and as it's, as it's delineated through the total cost of monies that we pull in from the Ovis fund, that, that gives us the truer picture of how many vehicles we can purchase from that Ovis fund, because that's already factored in, Senator.
Do you know what that, that cost or an average or estimate of what that cost is to retrofit a vehicle? So if you were to take a regular patrol car and they retrofit it for police use, do we know what that, what added cost that is to a vehicle?
So it's about $15,000 for that siren package and the radio that, that comes with the cage, that glass to protect the, the operator of the patrol car. So that's a $15,000 package.
Thank you. I think there had been mentioned before, under the Ovis fee, I'm not sure if this is necessarily related to GPD, but was there talks of the purchase of a Department of Corrections retrofitted van? Is that something that had been brought up before?
Not with the Guam.
To transport prisoners?
Not from the Guam Police Department.
Okay. As of, as of right now, is GPD, is GPD responsible for transferring prisoners?
What, what it is, Senator, is there was a time in the Guam Police Department where we had what's called a transport section. So those, what was happening in the past was, as officers make arrests at the different precincts, so as not to tie down the police officer, which ties, which directly impacts the response time for calls for services, we had transport officers go from the Hagana Precinct Command and go out to the different precincts, pick up arrestees, bring him to the processing section, and then transport them up to the Department of Corrections. We've, we've since moved away from that in previous chiefs administrations, so what we're trying to do now is come back, bring that back so that it lessens the downtime of police officers. Because when a police officer makes arrests out in the field, that police officer now has to take care of that arrestee all the way until he drops him off or her off up at the Department of Corrections. That downtime sometimes takes all day long.
Now, this transportation division, are you looking at using patrol vehicles to make these transfers?
No, we're, we're looking at transport vans.
Transport vans that are retrofitted for the safety of the officers and the occupants, correct?
That's correct.
And is this something that, that would be, that would, you would be looking to purchase with the Ovis fee? Is that, this is something qualified?
It, it would, because that vehicle would be a marked vehicle. It would have sirens on it, it would have lights on it, it'd be retrofitted with cages, and it would have GPD stickers all throughout the vehicle.
Thank you.
So it clearly meets the, the requirements of it being a, a marked vehicle.
Thank you. One, one other question. In the last, during your time as chief with the last fiscal year, has there been a year in which you have not, because Department of Administration still handles the funds, and they still need to allot you the money that they've received from the Ovis fee? Have there been any fiscal years in which you have not received the full allotment for the Ovis fee?
Not, not that I'm aware of, Senator.
And my final question for you, Chief, do you currently have standard operating procedures and asset management planned for the current fleet of vehicles you have? And is this something that, if you have not developed, are you looking to, are you planning to develop for your two-fleet system to adequately manage the assets of the department?
We, I'm sorry. Yes. We have a table of organization and equipment, which is a codified in a general order in the Guam Police Department. That table of organization and equipment clearly delineates how many patrol vehicles are authorized at each one of the different sections, and there is a general order that governs the patrol vehicles themselves as far as the maintenance of those vehicles. And as we look into a two-fleet system, we're looking to implement or update that general order to incorporate the use of that two-fleet system whereby you have one fleet that's working and another fleet that's, that's resting or in service.
Thank you for that. And, and I guess what I'm looking for is just maybe something if, if we can look at developing further into the future, similar to the way that they do in the military, right? If a vehicle has a deficiency that's annotated prior to even going out, who specifically can authorize the vehicle to go down? So similar like a check fault or a circle.
We do have that system in place, Senator. And it's, it's caught, captured in what's called a vehicle condition report.
Okay.
If the officer does that check of the vehicle and renders it to be unsafe to be operated, it will bring that to the supervisor's attention. It's, it's codified, it's annotated in that vehicle condition report, and then it's again forwarded up to our fleet maintenance section for it to be dealt with from, by our mechanics.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying that, Chief. Thank you. No further questions.
Thank you, Chief. Just wanted to check, you said this would increase the response time, of course, to have more vehicles, and could you just tell us the current status of your response time and, and what you think that might be increased by? I guess it's pursuant to your long-term plan?
Yes. So we do have a patrol response matrix. I don't have that response matrix in front of me, Senator. I can get that to your office so that you can see what our current response time is. The police patrol, the police service response matrix is directly related to the number of beat officers that we have on duty, how many people are assigned to each of the precincts. Of course, vehicles are part of that equation as well, but more so the problem for, or the issue that affects the response, the response time, is more of a personnel issue versus a, a logistics issue. We don't have any issues with our officers responding out there in a, in a vehicle to get out there. The issue is more so, do we have enough police officers to get out there and respond? So the response time, again, is more directly related to the number of calls for service that come in and the number of police officers on duty, more so than it is the availability of police officers. So I just wanted to be clear about that. I can get you that document so that you can see what our current personnel status is and, and for the calls of service that we get, the amount of time that it would take to respond should a citizen call for service.
All right. So then what is the, maybe the ratio, or how does it work now between the number of officers that you have and the number of cars that you have? I mean, are we, are we, do they have enough cars for the current officers? Or, and sorry, do you need more cars for additional officers? Or do you not even have enough cars for the current officers?
Currently, our, our fleet of vehicles is maintaining the operation. We are able to make mission, but as indicated in my testimony, we are short of vehicles for the number of beat areas that we, that we have. So we have patrol officers assigned to each precinct, of which they average 30 or 31 per precinct. Now, with the number of beats that, that, that exist at each of the precincts and the number of shifts as we spread the, as we manage our personnel and spread them out, we have enough patrol vehicles to meet that end state. But again, as we move towards growth in the department, as we move towards lowering that response time so that we can respond to more calls for service and lessen that response time, we're looking to recruit more officers and at the same time, bring in enough resources for those officers, i.e. bringing in enough patrol cars. So to answer that question upfront, currently, we have a sufficient amount of vehicles for the number of officers that we currently have out in our Neighborhood Patrol Division.
All right. Thanks. I appreciate your, your testimony and all your responses, and I guess I just want to just go back to like the basics of the bill is, is to increase the fee for inspection. So when you get, when we all get our vehicles inspected, the fee would go from $15 to $25. And so I think we all can agree that GPD could use the extra money. I don't think anyone would object to that.
Sure.
Going to GPD. So it, under this bill, it'd be an extra $7 for every vehicle inspection, right?
That's correct.
So, but there's also an extra $3 that it looks to me like would be going to the inspection companies. Do you see, do you have any input on that?
To the inspection companies?
I mean, the private companies? Well, they're going to get $10 out of the $25, right? So there's, so the remaining $15 would go to the private companies?
It should go to the inspection station.
Right. So they're currently getting $12.
That's correct.
So I'm just saying, they're going to get an increase of $3 per vehicle also.
Yes.
Okay. Do you have any input on that?
I do not, Senator. I have not sat with any of the inspection station owners.
All right.
Or operators to have a discussion regarding that matter.
And then what about the $7? Do you, I'm not sure if I just missed it, or do you have any maybe clarification? And what if we reduce that to five instead of seven? How would that impact you?
If, I'm sorry, Senator, we were.
If we reduce the seven additional amount that would go to GPD to something like five, so that we increase the fee that's going to be charged to the consumers?
Okay.
That would still be a significant increase. It would still be a $5 increase instead of seven, and I guess I just, I, I'm going to take it from your testimony. GPD can use any, any amount that they're going, that they can get from this Ovis fees. It's going to go directly to automobiles. No one has any objection to that.
Repair parts and maintenance, yes.
I guess I'm just kind of checking where the $7 came from versus any other number.
Well, the, the, we're currently, we're currently getting $3.
Right.
Okay? And with the bill.
You're going to get 10.
We're going, it's going to, it's going to, it's going to go up to $10, so we get a $7 increase. So it's $10 altogether. So your question to me, ma'am, is where did this seven come from?
Yes. Is that based on like your long-term plan? Did you have an exact number in your long-term plan that you needed, or?
I think in working with the Senator, we just, what we, what we took a look at was with this $7 increase getting, bringing us from three to $10, we did the analysis, and based on that analysis, it brings us, or it gets us that additional, or it brings us to that point where we get 22 vehicles per year versus five vehicles per year.
Okay. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Chief, your, your table of operations for the number of cars.
The table of organization and equipment?
Yes. And you want cars for each of the officers? Is, is that correct?
Well, the table of organization and equipment is a table that exists on how we are structured right now. And based on growth, on what we are projecting for growth each year, based on Public Law 33163, which allows us to recruit up to 40 per year over, out to 2021, we use that as a premise for growth, projected growth. And that's how we built that table of organization and equipment, is that if we were to we built that table of organization and equipment, is that if we were to follow public law 33163, and hypothetically, if we were to recruit up to 40 per year over the next four years, out to 2021, this is what we could project our growth to be. And when we look at the number of vehicles that we need on that projected growth, we correlate the number of vehicles to the number of officers that we're going to have onboard, to the number of beat areas at each of the precincts. So that's how that was designed.
Okay. There's 12 of you in the room.
I'm sorry?
How many, there's 12 officers in the room now. Does that mean there are 12 official cars outside somewhere?
There are not. There's one official car outside, and that's mine.
Okay. I was just wondering, trying to figure out whether it's, so the purchase is only for the beat cars?
That is correct.
And you might as well address it because it's circulating on social media.
What is circulating?
There's a, there's a car supposedly at Tezen.
Yes. That was donated to the Guam Police Department, that was not purchased through general fund appropriations. It did not come from the Ovis fund. It was donated by Ken Corporation, and that was earmarked by my predecessor to be surveyed to GSA. And we resurrected that vehicle, and because of our strategy of policing, decided to use that vehicle to showcase our strategy of policing.
Is that used in any beat, or is it just a showcase piece?
No, it is used by our Community Resource Unit officers when we go out there and engage with the community.
That's to publicize the slogan?
It is to interact with the community to further, to further push our initiatives of community-oriented policing so that we can get the community to collaborate with us. So the vehicle is used for official business. It's used in an official capacity when we go out there to engage with the community.
Okay. Because I was just wondering, I had received.
Well, I can't, I can't account for what's in social media, Mr. Speaker, but I can tell you what we have done in the Guam Police Department.
No, I understand. And that was a, that was a donation from Ken Corporation?
It was. It was.
And it is being utilized, but it's being utilized for your outreach?
Absolutely. We reached out to the folks from the Ken Corporation, and when we told them what we were going to do with this vehicle, they were excited that we were going to do this with that vehicle. And they were all too willing to donate more parts so that it doesn't get surveyed at GSA and that it's used for the community.
Surveyed? Why would it be surveyed? It looked like a brand-new car.
Oh, it wasn't a brand-new car, Mr. Speaker. It sustained severe damages to, because of patrol operations. So it was getting ready to get surveyed.
Oh, so they paid to have it painted?
Absolutely. They, absolutely.
Okay. Because I was just wondering what that.
They sure did. They sure did. 100% through no expense of the taxpayers.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome, sir.
Okay. Good afternoon, Mr. Speaker and Senators.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, you ready?
Go ahead.
Okay. My name is Bob Perrin, and I'm here representing Pacific Tire, which I'm a principal of. I stand in support of Bill 188-34 Corrected and its intent of providing additional funding to the police department's vehicle purchase and maintenance budget, as well as keeping up with general cost increases experienced by safety inspection stations. Due to the importance of the mission of GPD in keeping us all safe, it's incumbent on all of us to ensure they have the money to accomplish this mission. When a small group of the safety inspection operators approached Senator Uggins' office initially around a year ago with the idea of increasing the safety inspection fees from 15 to 25, we were proposing a 50-50 split of the $10 increase to help keep up with the cost increases over the past 10-plus years. In fact, the last time the fee was increased was back in 2007. Since then, minimum wage has gone up from $6.55 an hour to $8.25 an hour, in addition to rent increases and other escalations that we've all felt over the past 10-plus years. With the importance of the GPD mission and the limited funding sources, I support the $7 share going to the government and the $3 share going to the station operators. This $3 really becomes $2.60 when the sites pay the GRT on the full $10 increase. So really, it's a $2.60 increase net of GRT. Having said that, I would like to propose that we add to the bill a limit on opening additional safety inspection stations in areas that are already serviced by existing facilities. A parameter could be set where additional facilities couldn't be opened within a two- or three-mile radius of an existing station. This would still allow for additional stations to be opened in underserved areas. Lumping numerous safety inspection stations in a small area really doesn't serve anyone's interests. It gives additional work to the Department of Revenue and Taxation to track, train, and inspect additional unnecessary sites. In addition, as the economics get worse for individual sites due to reduced revenue and business per site, the ability of sites to properly staff and maintain their, these particular sites is diminished. I heard an argument that this really interferes with free enterprise, but I believe this is, really isn't correct in this, in this situation. Yeah, this service is provided under strict government-controlled rules and regulations with a set fee. No amount of competition will alter the cost of the service or what is required of the safety inspection stations. The service is provided, in a sense, as an agent of the government. For these reasons, I stand in support of Bill 188-34 with the one caveat as mentioned above. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Kim?
Yes, sir. Thank you. Good afternoon, Senators. I basically echo everything Bob has just mentioned, but would add a couple things. Should a moratorium on the number of stations be something you consider, I think it would be important to grandfather in the existing stations, stations that have already made capital commitments, and to preserve the ability of those stations to be sold and to continue operating. The other issue that hasn't been raised yet is that several years ago, a waiver was granted to the inspection of new vehicles. So currently, under Guam law, new vehicles are granted a waiver of three years before they're inspected. We, as an organization, were in agreement with a one-year waiver. We feel that new cars that come in are, generally speaking, in very good shape and don't require an inspection. That made sense to us. But the three-year waiver is problematic in the sense that roads are tough on Guam. We've got very difficult weather conditions, and three years just seems a long time to elapse before cars get safety inspected. So that may be something this body wants to revisit, which would be basically reducing the waiver to one year for passenger vehicles. Thank you.
I want to commend, I didn't realize you guys are connected to Rev and Tax, so that as soon as you do the vehicle inspection, Rev and Tax knows about it?
Yeah, we electronically transmit it to Rev and Tax. Yes, sir.
You can, you can get your registration online.
Yeah. No, I was going to commend you because someone came up when we were talking about this bill and said, commended the inspection stations because he wanted to get a re-registration, and he realized that he was going to be past the date, but for the fact that he got the inspection on a Sunday, and he got online and was actually able to do his, got his online registration on a Sunday afternoon. And he just wanted to commend me, and I want to commend you and Rev and Tax for having that.
Oh, yeah, that's very helpful for everybody, yeah, being able to do it online, not stand in line down at DMV, yeah.
I think that's great. And.
Yes, sir.
But I just wanted to commend all of you. I didn't realize that it was everybody, but when this was brought to my attention, I looked into it. And so I just wanted to commend you.
Oh, thank you.
Okay. Anybody have any questions? Anybody?
Thank you for the testimony, Mr. Perrin, Mr. Kim. And just wanted to comment, in our discussions, it has been brought to my attention that this Ovis fee that you pay, you guys are paying a gross receipts tax on it on the total, even though a portion of it is going to GPD. I just want you to be aware that I'm still looking into this matter, only because you shouldn't be paying on the gross when your price is fixed by statute and you don't receive the entirety. So now that the fee is going up, I want to ensure that this is not going to be problematic and affect your overall costs, especially with the new tax increases and how much you're able to expense out in terms of local tax. So it is something I'm working on. I do have to go into the tax situation anymore, but thank you for bringing that up in the public testimony, and just be aware that it's still being addressed.
Okay. Thank you, Senator.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The question for Chief JI, the bill mentions Ovis, the official vehicle inspection safety fee.
Yes, ma'am.
So for 27, or FY17, approximately $300,000 was collected. You might have gone over this previously, but just for the record, could you restate what this fee funded in the fiscal year?
It funded for a portion of the fiscal year until the law passed, which gave the chief of police 100% discretion on the use of that funding. Initially, it was a 30-70 split. 70% of the funding that we received from the Ovis fee could be used for the purchase of parts and equipment and maintenance. Only 30% of that could be used for the purchase of vehicles. With the introduction of that public law that gave the discretion to the chief to use 100% of it at the chief's discretion to include the purchase of vehicles, at that point, we started to purchase more vehicles. So I don't have the exact numbers of exactly how we split that. However, Major Kidigwa is sitting with me, Sergeant Antalan is sitting in the back there. We can get you the exact numbers on how we spent every dime of Ovis funding and at up to what point when we, when the 30-70 split was still in effect, and then after that, how we spent that money.
Yeah, I'd appreciate that, as well as the patrol response matrix that you referred to previously with the vice speaker's question.
Yes.
So with this 100% discretion, are you able to tell me if GPD acquired any additional vehicles with that money, the $300,000?
We did.
And how many?
Again, I don't have those hard numbers directly in front of me.
But you'll get that to me.
But we will get the, Sergeant Antalan's making notes of that on the back.
Thank you.
And we will make sure we get you that exact information, ma'am.
Thank you very much. On page two of the bill, it references cars for the community, Cape Fleet Use Agreement between AK. And, you know, we want to always thank our community partners. You mentioned KenCorps earlier. I think it's important that people in our community are seeing the need.
Yes.
With GPD and responding to the call and helping you and the team at GPD to just assist the community. But my question is, if the lease isn't being renewed, what is the fate of these vehicles?
Of the, of those Prius vehicles?
Yes, the Prius vehicles.
Those vehicles have been returned to AK, ma'am.
Okay.
They, I think that the deadline was December 15th of last, of last year.
2017, right.
2017. So we did receive a reminder from Mr. Des Graham, and we did pull the vehicles back. We made sure that they were in operating condition, and then they were returned to Atkins Crawl.
Is it part of your plan to attempt to replace these vehicles?
It is not. And I'll tell you why, ma'am. Because those vehicles were donated to the Guam Police Department via the lease program. Again, it was, it was nothing that, there was no monies expended between GPD and the Atkins Crawl Guam. The intent of those vehicles was for the neighborhood patrol to be used inside the village. So that's something we're working towards, which kind of goes back to what the speaker initially talked about with our Mandanya vehicle up there. The vehicle's designed to be interacting in the village with the community. So that's what the intent of those Prius vehicles were, not to endure the rigors of hard patrol work. So I would tell you, we are not looking in that direction to engage with those kind of vehicles until we are confident that our fleet of police patrol cruisers are at a level where then we can take a look at, you know, the concept of the neighborhood patrol vehicles, whether it's the Priuses or another vehicle out there that can be used inside the village. And again, those are all things that we are taking a look at. When we look at our table of organizational equipment that I had mentioned with the speaker and the growth in the department, all that is factored in before we can actually take that into consideration of bringing Priuses. Because I will admit to you that the Prius lease program and using those vehicles out there was, was not necessarily the best thing for the Guam Police Department and the people. There was an officer survival issue. There's an officer safety issue because you have an arrest fee in the back with no cage to protect the officer. And then those vehicles are not designed, they're Priuses, four-cylinder vehicles, not designed, no reinforced suspensions and transmissions and what have you. So again, we just need to be careful of that. And if we are going to revisit that program, I think we need to, we need to take a look at our fleet of patrol vehicles first.
Thank you, Chief. And just my last question. You were mentioning transport vehicles and the vans, and you were just alluding to the different uses of the vehicles as you just were. So with regard to the transport vehicles and the idea that we're entering into the FY19 budget cycle?
Yes, ma'am.
I just wanted to ask you, if this bill were to pass, could you tell us what the department's priorities would be with regard to this fund for FY19?
With regards to this particular fund?
Yes, this particular fund, Ovis.
It's the continued outright purchase upfront, and with the leftover funding that we have, the purchase of parts, equipment, and then maintenance. As we look at this $41,000 or $50,000 vehicle, what this comes with is a three-year maintenance, the warranty? It's a three-year warranty. So that also addresses that. It alleviates the pressure on our mechanics, because then if a vehicle goes down, we take it right back to the dealer. So the priority is for the outright purchase of the vehicles first, and then looking at whatever monies are left over that can't purchase a vehicle because it's not enough money, then purchase surplus parts for when those vehicles do go down and are outside of what's covered in the warranty.
All right. Well, thank you, Chief, and thank you in advance for submitting the response matrix and the information that the vice speaker had asked.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you to your team. Thank you, Mr. Perrin and Mr. Kim, also for participating today. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Yes, ma'am.
There are no further questions. Thank you very much. And Bill 184 is Dean Hurd.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you. So Mr. Kim and Mr. Perrin, are you?
Yeah, Perrin.
Herron? Herron? Sorry about that.
That's okay.
Mr. Kim, you mentioned you belong to the same organization?
Yeah, I use the term loosely. I mean, just a group of safety inspection station operators.
Okay. All right. So I just wanted to know, I understand that when you first, from your testimony, that when you first looked at this, the draft of this bill, or when you first discussed it, you were talking about a 50-50 split, and now it's down to 70-30 or something. But, but if you could just, if we are going to increase the fees for the private inspection companies and grant a monopoly, I mean, right now, it sounds to me, from what you described, that, that the industry is able to support, it supported an increase in companies already, right? But without the increase in the fee, in other words, without a mandatory $3 increase, it was able to grow that industry. Additional companies opened. I'm guessing that from your testimony. And then, but yet, if we were going to, you know, kind of limit that kind of grant monopoly areas, right? I understand why you want that, that the efficiency of that. But that, in addition to the additional fee, I mean, do you think that's justified?
Well, there has been addition, Senator, excuse me, there has been additional stations that have opened over the last five years, probably three or four more sites. So that's why we did approach initially Senator Uggins, and then Senator Estevez picked up the ball on it, and we've been working with him. But that's why we brought this forward, because we were seeing a decrease due to the additional stations opening up. And we, we hear there's more folks that are looking at opening up anywhere from three- up anywhere from three to five more sites right next to existing additional sites opening next to existing sites. So it just seems to me we're, you know, reaching a point of saturation in certain areas that, you know, negatively impact, you know, operations, you know, due to revenue loss, and then also you're putting more work on rev and tax to inspect these sites, train the people, keep track of all the documentation from these sites. And we just don't see a benefit in opening additional sites that the public really isn't asking for. There doesn't seem to be a problem with the existing number of sites, with people waiting in long lines or not being serviced in their area. So what we were looking at doing was just, initially it was a 5-5 split, but then after meeting with Senator Estevez, we agreed and came to the conclusion that it was more important that GPD take the lion's share of it in order to, you know, help keep us all safe, and that on our side, that it at least kept us up to where we had been before all the increases in minimum wage over the last 10 years and stuff. So we have been backsliding as minimum wages have been going up and other costs have been going up, because there's not any more vehicles being inspected. You know, we're just incurring additional cost and then having the business fall off due to additional sites being opened, you know, in the same geographic vicinity.
All right, thank you.
If I could just add, if you factor in inflation, I mean, again, the last time the fees were raised was 10 years ago. So if you factor in inflation, this $3 increase, 216 as it stands now, when you subtract the GRT that we'll be paying, barely brings us back up to par with rates 10 years ago.
Why, how do you calculate that? What are you basing your inflation rate on?
Sorry?
What are you saying the inflation rate has been in the last 10 years?
I used, I did, I just used the Consumer Price Index. I couldn't find the actual inflation rate for Guam, but using the Consumer Price Index, what a dollar is worth today as opposed to it is 10 years ago. If you backtrack that, we should actually be at about $15. I mean, if we wanted to maintain parity.
How much, $50?
Fifteen, fifteen.
Fifteen?
Which is what we would be with this additional $3, what we would be getting as safety inspection station operators.
I see.
So we essentially get back to parity, but as Bob mentioned, we've been backsliding for 10 years with just the increase in expenses.
All right. And Chief, I might be a little repetitive, but just one more time, if you could just tell me, when you, the goal for you is a two-fleet system, but do you, and that's what you're going to use, is Ovis money to?
Ultimately, Madam Vice Speaker, yes. Ultimately, that's the goal.
All right, and when, what, does your personnel, I mean, so that's not an immediate goal?
At this point here, if we could, I mean, in a perfect world, if I was king for a day and I could get that many vehicles, yes, I would absolutely have a two-fleet system.
Well, with this bill, how long would it take you? I know you told us this already.
It would take, initially it would take two years with this bill.
All right.
As time goes on, we can push this and extend that two-year, that two-fleet system.
Okay.
Ultimately, I mean, you know, right now, the goal is with, when we look at our strategic plan, GPD came out with a strategic plan year before last. Ultimately, we, again, in a perfect world, we'd love to get to a three-fleet system. When you look at jurisdictions throughout the nation who are on eight-hour shifts, when the patrol officer and the car goes on, they go out and they patrol the street, two shifts are resting, two cars are resting as well. So the patrol car and the patrol officer are resting just as much. That even extends the life of the vehicles even further.
Sure, but your current plan is for two fleets?
A two-fleet system.
And how does the personnel?
Again, when you take a look at?
Do you have personnel for two fleets right now?
Currently, we do. Currently, we do.
So your plan to go up to two fleets is because of the existing number of personnel? I mean, that, they match?
That is correct.
Okay, all right, I wanted to make sure.
Yes, ma'am.
Did you want to add something, Mr. Kim?
Yes, I just want to get back on this issue of the moratorium and the monopoly. That's absolutely not what we're looking for, but we do feel that there should be some kind of consideration given to how the geographical area is served, given that we don't have control over the prices, we can't compete on price. We're, to some degree, agents of the government, as it were. So just to make sure that it makes economic sense, and whether it is in the public's interest that another station, you know, be granted a business to operate and license. So perhaps the Director of Revenue and Taxation could operate within certain guidelines that would take that into consideration.
Mr. Speaker, just to be clear, even that whole concept is not on the table at this point, right? I mean, that's not included in this bill. It was just a suggestion from Mr. Perrin, and you're basically affirming your support for that. But just to be clear, that's not what this public hearing is about.
That's right.
Right, just a recommendation for a modification to the bill if possible.
For future legislation.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. All right.
Thank you all for coming this afternoon. Bill 184 is deemed, 188 is deemed heard. The next bill on the agenda was introduced by Senator Michael S. Nicholas. I'll allow him to introduce the bill, and...
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, Bill Number 205-34 is an act to add a new subsection 36103 to Chapter 36 Title 11 Guam Code annotated relative to whistleblower awards to individuals who report underpayments of taxes levied under the laws of Guam. Mr. Speaker, this bill is part of our overall efforts to look into the existing framework of the federal government and find places where there is certain parameters set that would be beneficial for us to adopt here on Guam. Currently, we mirror the federal income tax code, and part of mirroring the federal income tax code includes a mirror of the laws, rules, and regulations that apply to that code, including a whistleblower provision with respect to the federal income taxes. So on the federal side, if there are any circumstances that warrant a whistleblower complaint for underpayment or any kind of fraudulent activity for federal taxes, because we mirror the federal code, that law is already in place for federal taxes. What we do not have is a code that would allow for a whistleblower statute on our local taxes. And our local taxes are our property taxes, our business privilege taxes, also known as grocery receipts taxes, our excise taxes, such as alcohol and tobacco taxes. There is no whistleblower statute that applies to that, because the federal mirror code is only limited to federal income taxes, corporate income taxes withholding taxes. So in order for us to ensure that we're going to be affording as much of an opportunity as possible for us to recover as much local tax income as possible, especially during these revenue-challenged times, we want to make sure that there is a provision on the local taxes that would allow for whistleblowers to be able to bring forward any kind of proof or circumstances that would illustrate that a local tax is being escaped by somebody who actually owes it. So what we've done with Bill 205-34 is we've mirrored the federal whistleblower law, but we've written it in a way that would have it applied to local taxes. So by virtue of us mirroring this, we keep it as close as possible to a system that's already tried and true of the Internal Revenue Code. In fact, Illicitudor finds that in the last three fiscal years, amounts recovered into the United States Treasury from this program have averaged $393,405,000, with average annual awards of $72,386,000 to individuals who reported underpayments. So on the federal side, this brings in and recovers a lot of, what would have been taxes that were not going to be collected to begin with. By applying this on the local side, we may be able to increase our local tax revenues, not by raising any taxes, but simply by making sure that those who are supposed to be paying them are in fact paying them. As you may recall, Mr. Chairman, as Chair of Appropriations, when we review the collections history and the delinquencies within our collections in our tax system, our largest delinquencies are actually on our local tax rolls, particularly the business privilege tax and the taxes that are being underpaid there. And that's just on the reporting side, Mr. Speaker. If there are other taxes that are being unreported, this whistleblower law will further help to catch those non-payers. So I'm humbly asking my colleagues to please consider Bill 205-34, and I look forward to the testimony from the public with respect to this measure. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you, Senator. I'll note for the record that testimony was provided electronically by Robert Patton, President of the Taxpayer Against Fraud Education Fund. Originally, he was going to fly out from Washington, D.C. He was unable to make the hearing, and so he submitted testimony, and that testimony is now part of the record of this committee. And we have one person who is in the hall this morning, this afternoon, to testify, and that's Senator Bob Klitsky.
Mr. Chairman, I guess I'm one of the usual suspects. Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman. Would you like me to start on 205, or 220, or both at the same time, or what's your pleasure, sir? 205, okay. I would ask your permission to state a short analogy, Mr. Speaker. Once upon a time, we used to have carnivals on our island, and one of the main features of the carnival was a bell that could be rung by swinging a mallet and hitting a lever that would cause, would cause a piece of metal to go up a track and hit a bell at the top of the track. Have you ever seen one of those? Yeah. And if you, I was never able to do this. I tried a lot of times, but if you really whacked that mallet down hard, that little piece of metal would go up and ring the bell, and you would be awarded a cigar. So with respect to this bill, Mr. Chairman, and Honorable Senator S. Nicholas, with respect to both these bills, I would say close, but no cigar. But nice try. So I think that enforcement of many things that we want to see enforced lies best with the public. Talked about this, I think all of us were here yesterday, we talked about this very same thing yesterday, that oftentimes expecting better performance from the government by creating another governmental agency does not lead to the kind of remedy that we're looking for. That sometimes incentivizing the public can get us a better result than we can from creating more government to go the direction we want it to go. With Bill 205, I think it would be necessary to bring about certain reorganizations within the way the Department of Revenue and Taxation does business. Right now, Mr. Chairman, sometimes it's hard for me to pay my own taxes, much less worry about whether somebody else has paid his. The Department of Revenue and Taxation doesn't answer the telephone when you call. The ease with which one can get information from the Department of Revenue and Taxation is not there. So if, for instance, I decided to stop tilting at the windmills that I've been tilting on recently and took it upon myself to go out and find people who are cheating on the grocery receipts tax, I wouldn't know where to start. I wouldn't have access to any records. I wouldn't know if someone who is operating a sort of de minimis business is paying his grocery receipts tax or not, unless I asked him. If I asked him, he probably would be somewhat annoyed, and if he were paying his grocery receipts tax, he'd be annoyed, and if he weren't paying his grocery seat tax, he wouldn't tell me anyhow. So I don't know if we want to throw open some of our tax records to increase the ability of the public to enforce the law against those who are cheating on their taxes. That's a pretty big step. But as it is, I think it would be very difficult for anyone except an insider to be able to help us enforce the statute. Let's say that we have, we have Bob's store, and Bob is doing $100,000 worth of business every month and paying GRT on 50. And Bob's bookkeeper, although he's not part of the scheme, he's astute enough to know that Bob's only paying GRT on half instead of the whole thing. That might be happening right now, but that would be the only way that I could see that anyone would be able to blow this whistle, and under the current state of the law, no one has sought to come forward and blow that whistle. I don't know if the rewards here are significant to the point to encourage that insider to come out and blow the whistle, something that perhaps could be thought over, Senator. But outside of an insider, yeah, that's a good phrase, outside of an insider, I don't know how anyone else would be able to have a shot at catching the tax cheat with enough reliability or information to take it to RevTax and give RevTax something that it may or may not bite on, probably wouldn't bite on anyhow. So, good idea, one that could be very beneficial, good start, but maybe a little fine-tuning, Who's the chair, Teresa?
I am acting chair right now.
Okay.
Senator Klitsky.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
All right, thank you. Senator S. Nicholas?
Just a handful of observations. The first is that this is a mirror of the federal code. It's actually been very, very effective on the federal side, and on top of that, we actually have had success with the federal code being enforced here using this whistleblower provision. I'm not privy to the information at hand in front of me, but I do recall that there have been certain tax cases that were brought because of this whistleblower program under the federal side. Because we don't have it on the local side, we're unable to bring it on the local side. And based on my conversations with certain industry players, the topic of whether or not this is going to involve insiders is actually very relevant, because it is actually the industry insiders who would know. If, for example, you are part of an industry where there are three, four, or five dominant players, and you're very familiar with what your market share is, and you're familiar with what your opponent's market share is, and you're familiar with what your tax basis is, and you're able to very clearly see that your opponent's tax basis is not similar, it makes for a very easy opportunity for you to come forward and say, hey, look, I've got 50% market share, but I'm paying 80% of the taxes. What's going on here? Someone's not paying something. And it's at that point that you become a whistleblower, and the agency would then be able to go after and recover those monies on behalf of the people of Guam. If we do not pass statute to create the incentive, it makes it difficult for those individuals who would not have a business interest but may be aware of these circumstances to come forward, particularly if you're an individual in a company and you are familiar with certain practices happening that are not supposed to be. You may not necessarily be incentivized to come forward, because the opportunity does not present itself, and you're going to lose your job if you do. But with these kind of incentives here, it encourages people to ensure that there is not an honest environment taking place, and it would disincentivize the, what I think is an environment where we have far too many people taking advantage of the system and getting away with it. If we have the penalties in place and the incentives in place, I think that it would help to... help to curtail any additional abuse. So I appreciate the testimony from Senator Klitsky. If mirroring the federal statute is not enough, I am curious to further discuss what additional provisions may be included. But that being said, I'm grateful for the testimony, and look forward for any additional testimony from other members of the public. Mr. Chairman.
Senator Klitsky, just wanted to get your thoughts on something. So as we know, Guam has a very unique market. It's smaller. I hear the arguments with regards to having a whistleblower and incentivizing. But do you think it could be problematic with the potential of false claims? As I understand, as a business owner, even as an attorney, if somebody were to make a false claim and they were found to be false, they weren't true, it could potentially tank a business. Is that something that you could potentially see? Is that somebody would be able to sue for? So if it were used in a negative way, you know, I make a claim, maybe I have evidence, maybe I don't, the claim enough is enough to tank a person and their reputation in such a, in a microeconomy like Guam? Is that open up the potential for if nothing is found and they don't get the, they're not identified as a whistleblower, or the claims were false, or they believed them to be true, could they see a follow-up lawsuit because of this?
Yeah, it's possible. There could be some very interesting litigation arising in the face of a false claim, because if the claim is made to a government agency, then we get into our anti-slap legislation that would potentially protect the false claimant from a libel suit under the ordinary rules of defamation unless the plaintiff could show a deliberate intent. So it's possible that that could happen, that the false claim might go unpunished. Something else, I think, to think about, the balance there, of course, would be between the collection efforts and the necessity for the Department of Revenue and Taxation to be very good at what it does. You might have caught from my earlier testimony that I don't have, I don't see the Department of Revenue and Taxation as one of our sterling agencies right now, let's put it diplomatically as I might. But that's a possibility, Senator.
Thank you.
Well, I just would like to ask RevTax if they think they need this, or if they're able, as Senator Klitsky is describing, to do the collections themselves, to do the investigations, or if this would help them, because they're not here. I'm curious, from their perspective, whether they feel like they're successful without some kind of incentive for the witnesses that they're using, or are they able to kind of get those witnesses to cooperate? Or are they getting tips? But I mean, otherwise, if it would help them, then I can see the benefit of it. And you're suggesting, Senator Klitsky, that the incentive may be too low? I mean, the amounts that we're using for incentive in the bill?
Well, I'm saying, and much of what I say here, I'll save, because I'm going to say the same things on 220, and then you won't have to listen to the same jabber twice. But what I'm saying is that these will be hard nuts to crack, and given the lack of transparency in our entire taxation mechanism, lack of transparency, as I mentioned, you can't even call them on the phone. It would be very difficult to go out, for anyone other than an insider to go out and gather this kind of information. I hear what Senator San Nicholas is saying, and what we're talking about is a reconstruction of income-type approach to determining tax liability, and that takes a really, really sharp pencil and skillful people behind that pencil to do it. If we're operating here with respect to the department with nothing but gross data on an annual basis, it'd be pretty hard to do. Whether or not they think they need it, I don't know, and I'm going to have to confess a little disapproval of the way they operate, because in the 28th Guam Legislature, an office was created called the Office of, something like the Principal Tax Attorney, that allowed the Department of Revenue and Taxation to establish its own office staffed by lawyers and others to collect taxes. And that worked about as well as the Ethics Board, Senator San Nicholas. So what we have right now is we have laymen up against skilled CPAs and lawyers when it comes to going out and collecting taxes. So my own idea of what a tax collector ought to look like, he ought to be a guy with his cap brim pulled down over his eyes, wearing dark glasses, kind of slipping around the corners all over town, looking for people cheating on taxes. I just don't see that. Now, perhaps the senator has spoken with the director and has a better handle on this than I do, and if he does, and I will ask that my remarks be stricken from the record, Mr. Chairman.
You know, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Senator Klitsky, I believe I understand, but just to clarify, I believe I understand what you're saying. When you first opened up, you were saying it would be, in essence, difficult for anybody to really be a whistleblower of who is underpaying on their taxes or filing false returns, because they wouldn't have access to those returns?
Yes.
I mean, and that is the essence, I believe, because really, that's confidential information over at Revenue and Taxation, so nobody can just call up and say, I think somebody, somebody down the road, you know, person A down the road is underreporting, but that's only a suspicion, as opposed to a real whistleblower who has knowledge that there is. And the only situation might be in the one that you presented, or, you know, similar to that, in which an accountant or a bookkeeper was keeping track, and he would be the guy to be the whistleblower, knowing full well that his client was underpaying.
Well, he wouldn't be able to do it with his client, but something like that. Someone who was an insider, who had inside information in the business, would have to be the one to come forward.
Right.
And that's a pretty hard nut to crack, you know? I mean, there are all kinds of businesses and business relationships and perhaps semi-legal activities going on, and people just aren't really that willing to come forward
Right.
and blow the whistle on the boss, unless the boss does something to them, and then sometimes they're a little bit more willing to do it.
Right. And then towards the end, and just past minute or two, again, when you said really, what really should be happening is perhaps the guy with the sunglasses and the hat over his eyes, representing RevTax, going around to the various businesses to make sure that, perhaps, and then again, we've heard this case, where you go to certain businesses, it's a cash transaction, and yet nothing is rung up on the register.
Yeah.
You know, and maybe that would be a more appropriate response, to be able to catch those who are probably not registering that sale into their register.
Could be. But I do want to go back to what I mentioned at the beginning of my testimony. I think the more we can arm the public to help us enforce the laws, such as Senator San Nicholas intends here, I think the better off we'll be. I think the major point that I would make is that I think in order for this approach to be successful, we may have to change the way RevTax operates. There may have to be more openness and more ability to see who's exactly doing what to whom. If I saw somebody across the street selling tires, and he had a sign on his tire, on his stand that said, "Bob's Tire Stand," would I be able to call RevTax and say, does that guy have a business license? I don't think so. I think getting that kind of basic information, whenever I've ever had to get anything from along those lines, you know, it's about a half-day project, so.
Thank you, Senator. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Anything else on 205? Otherwise, we'll move to 220?
Say again?
No, I was just asking if any of the other senators had any questions on 205, so we could move to 220. We're on Bill 220, and I'll allow the sponsor to introduce the bill.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Bill 220-34 is an act to add a new Article VII to Chapter 46, Title IX Guam Code annotated relative to false claims filed with the government of Guam. Before I go into discussing this bill, Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to beg the indulges of the committee, I am actually interested in considering a merger of Bills 205 and 220 into a single piece of legislation, because there are components of Bill 220 that I believe address some of the concerns that were raised with respect to Bill 205, particularly the quitom provisions that are written into Bill 220. Bill 220 is basically similar to Bill 205, a mirror of existing federal statute, and the federal statute that is mirrored here in Bill 220 is the Federal False Claims Act. We have some findings and intent, but I actually wanted to take this opportunity to actually read the testimony that was provided by Mr. Robert Patton on behalf of the Taxpayers Against Fraud Education Fund and the Taxpayers Against Fraud Organization based out of He writes, "Good afternoon, Chairman Cruz and distinguished members of the Guam Legislature. I am Robert Patton, President of Taxpayers Against Fraud Education Fund. Before assuming my current position, I served for 21 years as an Assistant Attorney General for the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, most recently as Managing Attorney in the Medicaid Fraud Division, where I was responsible for the Attorney General's Office Medicaid False Claims Practice. The Taxpayers Against Fraud Education Fund is a public-interest, nonprofit organization dedicated to fighting fraud against the government by incentivizing integrity. Our mission is to maintain the integrity and advance the effectiveness of whistleblower reward and private enforcement provisions contained in federal and state laws, including the Federal and State False Claims Act, the Securities Exchange Act, the Internal Revenue Code, and the Commodity Exchange Act. The 501(c)(3) entity serves as a membership organization for attorneys who are practitioners and educators concentrating in these fields of law. We are supported by our membership of over 400 experienced litigators and by donations from successful whistleblowers, foundation grants, and citizen advocates. The 501(c)(3) arm of Taxpayers Against Fraud was founded in 1986. We are submitting testimony today to commend the Guam Legislature and to offer our insights to the public, the legal community, government officials, and advocacy organizations concerning the process, history, and impact of whistleblower lawsuits filed under the Federal and State False Claims Acts and the U.S. Security and Exchange Commission, U.S. Commodities Future Trading Commission, and Internal Revenue Service whistleblower programs. Guam spends significant sums of money to fund various governmental programs. It is essential to ensure that these funds are not lost to fraud, but are spent for their intended purposes. The Federal False Claims Act and similar laws in 32 states financially incentivize integrity and work to create public-private partnerships that have helped recover more than $65 billion for the federal and state governments over the course of the last 32 years. The success of the False Claims Act has prompted Congress to pass similar incentivized integrity laws to help expose fraud against the IRS, the SEC, and the CFTC. Since 2000, the number of states with False Claims Acts has grown from five in the year 2000 to 32. The False Claims Act, properly known as Lincoln's Law, was originally enacted during the Civil War in response to rampant procurement fraud against the Union Army. However, the statute was not widely used in the early 20th century, and prior to 1986, the Department of Justice recovered less than $50 million a year in false claims cases. Beginning in the mid-1980s, Senators Charles Grassley of Iowa and Representative Howard Berman of California led a successful bipartisan effort in Congress to amend and strengthen the False Claims Act, and in particular, to improve the provisions of the law that encourage whistleblowers to come forward with allegations of fraud against the government. In the 10 years following the 1986 amendments, Department of Justice recovered $1 billion in false claims actions. This year alone, quitom relators filed more than 700 new false claims cases, and Department of Justice reported recoveries of more than $3.7 billion, making 2017 the eighth consecutive year in which the federal government has recovered more than $3 billion in False Claims Act cases. The False Claims Acts are the most important and cost-effective tools used by the federal and state governments to ferret out and deter fraud, and the partnerships between private litigants and government attorneys have proved extraordinarily successful. The procedural and evidentiary burdens of filing a False Claims Act lawsuit require a whistleblower to hire an attorney, and virtually all successful quitom lawyers are hired on a contingent fee basis. Experienced false claims practitioners not only screen cases for the federal and state governments, they also investigate and develop whistleblower claims, organize and explain relevant documents, and screen out potentially privileged materials, giving defrauded agencies and government attorneys an understanding of how funds were lost and a roadmap for recovering them. The work done on the front end by the whistleblower and his or her attorneys can save the government years of effort and significant investigation costs. The federal and state governments often discover fraud, not because of agency oversight or a government audit, but through the efforts of a private whistleblower using the False Claims Act. Over 80% of the cases brought under the Federal False Claims Act are initiated by whistleblowers, and an even larger percentage of the funds recovered can be ascribed to whistleblower actions. Incentivized integrity provisions in the False Claims Act encourage and protect whistleblowers, helping to offset fears about the impact of bringing a suit on the whistleblower's financial situation and career, and empowering citizens and private companies to present evidence of fraud to the government. Those who step forward to blow the whistle on corrupt business practices typically receive between 15% and 25% of a recovery if the government joins the case, and between 25% and 30% if the government declines to join a case that ultimately ends with a successful Successful False Claims Act cases can promote industry-wide reform that works to deter misconduct and eradicate corrupt business practices. When one company gets penalized, others in the industry are more likely to change their conduct to avoid similar sanctions. Government contractors that engage in bid rigging, kickbacks, illegal subcontracting, prevailing wage violations, and other schemes can obtain an unfair competitive advantage over honest competitors when vying for government contracts. The False Claims Act serves as a great equalizer by reducing these frauds and leveling the playing field so that honest companies can compete successfully for government contracts. By exposing and penalizing industry-wide fraud schemes, incentivized integrity whistleblower programs have recovered billions that otherwise would have been lost to fraud. Since 1986, 32 states, the District of Columbia, and a number of cities have followed the federal government in adopting False Claims Acts based on the federal model. These acts have been passed in red states and blue states, and have been effective fraud-fighting tools for Republican and Democratic attorneys general alike. The bipartisan success of the Federal False Claims Act extends the benefits of public-private partnerships to protect public funds and better serve the American people. We are confident that a well-crafted incentivized integrity program in Guam, based on the U.S. False Claims Act, would reap benefits for years to come. In the findings and intent, Mr. Speaker, on the federal side, there have been two examples of federal false claims actions here on Guam. We have no examples of false claims actions for local circumstances, because we don't have the local statute. But just on Guam on the federal side alone, the United States of America, on behalf of the U.S. Environmental Protection Agency, secured $285,000 in settlement of a civil suit against GRH Technologies Construction Corporation and GRH's treasurer when GRH committed a violation of the False Claims Act under the federal side by submitting a fraudulent claim for reimbursement under a contract funded by the American Recovery and Reinvestment Act between Guam Water Works Authority and GRH for services including detection, pipeline, location, mapping, leak control, and related training. Now, just in that one example alone, Mr. Speaker, you can see how it involved a local agency, but the only thing that was recovered was the federal money. We weren't able to recover the local money that was lost to this, because we did not have the local provisions in place. Ilas Atura further finds that in November 2017-- Illet Satura further finds that in November 2017, District Court of Guam Chief Judge Francis Dingo Gatewood, under the Federal False Claims Act, awarded William and Fred Tok's 25% of the $3,100,000 settlement between the federal government and TOA Corporation, a Japanese company doing construction work for the U.S. military on Guam that created a sham joint venture with a smaller U.S. business to qualify for preferential treatment when bidding on U.S. government contracts. So, Mr. Speaker, this is happening on Guam. At the federal side, they're able to recover their federal losses due to fraud because they have a False Claims Act that applies to the federal government. We don't have a False Claim statute that applies to our local government, and our local government expends close to $1 billion a year of our taxpayers' money on various government services, service contracts, contracts for equipment, supplies, materials, we spend on building out infrastructure, and we have no provisions in place for anybody out there in the community who may see something happening or may know something happening that is fraudulent to have the incentive necessary for them to come forward and report these things and understand that that integrity action was actually incentivized in a mirror fashion to the federal government. The testimony provided by Mr. Robert Patton and this D.C.-based organization is an example of how, when Guam seeks to try and get its act together, we're going to get national attention and we're going to get national support. And by mirroring this Federal False Claims Act and also mirroring the whistleblower statutes to incentivize people coming forward, it will be transformative for our government. We will see our own people policing the spending habits of this government, policing the tax-paying habits of our fellow citizens, and we will take one very, very big step towards eradicating some of the most corrupt practices on this island. And these acts are necessary for us to be able to empower our people, to be able to file these lawsuits themselves on behalf of the people of Guam, recover some of the settlement, but then also create the environment necessary for this to not be something that anybody can get away with anymore. So I humbly ask for my colleagues to consider these measures, and I look forward to testimony from the public. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. The only one that's here is Senator Klitsky. Senator Klitsky, on Bill 220.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I agree with everything you say, Senator San Nicolas. I am as anxious as you are to bring the miscreants to justice on all of these points. The statute, as you point out, has been tried and true. We've been, we've been working on this since the Civil War, the quidam action began in the Civil War, and we've been refining it and working on it, et cetera. And it could possibly work here. I think probably Senator San Nicolas thinks that I came in here with a bucket of cold water to throw on his two bills, but I do want to point out what I think could be a problem, and I don't know that it's a soluble problem. In order to describe that, I'm going to have to say something that will be thought of as heretical. I'm going to express a heresy right here in this very legislative hall. That is, we don't have enough lawyers on Guam. Listening to the folks out there in the gallery booing and hissing. But as you pointed out, Senator San Nicolas, with your reading from Mr. Patton, lawyers would do this work on a contingent fee basis, excuse me, pardon me, a contingent fee basis. And the ramping up necessary to file one of these kinds of actions would be pretty severe. It's not the kind, it wouldn't be like suing your neighbor for a dog bite or something like that. I suspect that there's no one here on island who is up to speed on false claims, quidam, et cetera, that part of the law, so it'd require a certain amount of study, perhaps a certain investment in order to get ready. And then, when that first possible case came in, there would be an awful lot of research necessary and an even greater amount of investigation. Well, if you're going to do this on a contingency fee basis, that means you have to be a pretty well-capitalized law firm. There won't be very many solo practitioners that are going to go after this kind of business. And what we call big law here on the island is a half dozen lawyers. The likelihood, at least from my vantage point, the likelihood of any law firm on the island gearing up for something like this, pretty slim. So in order to make it fly, you'd have to get somebody like that group of lawyers in the D.C. to come out here and it'd be admitted pro hac vice. You're talking about something that would have to appear to be rather easily won with a rather large reward. I'm not saying it couldn't happen, but there wouldn't be a rush to the courthouse the day after this, this bill became law, I don't think. This is a specialty. The Federal Bar Association has a section called the Quidam Section, made up of lawyers who specialize in this kind of litigation. So there is a bar, a quidam bar, composed of lawyers who pretty much gear their entire practice towards this. We don't have it. We're a relatively small town when it comes to things like this. So I'm not saying that that should discourage this august body from passing this legislation. What I'm saying is that let's not set our expectations too high unless somebody can figure out how we would interest a group of out-of-town Jaspers in pinched-back suits to come out here and associate with local counsel in order to bring these actions. Now, it wouldn't take very many, and it would send a strong message to people who are making false claims, and the well would go dry pretty quick. But it may very well be something that, I don't see any downside risk on this one at all. So it may be something that this body may well consider to pass, even given my kind of negative prognosis concerning the instant success of the bill. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Senator Klitsky. Any senators wish to pose any questions?
I was thinking the AG's office was going to need another division or something, perhaps, I'm not sure. I think this definitely needs their input because the way the bill reads, yeah, there's burden on them to do investigation and that type of thing and to pursue the claims. So, yeah, maybe not lawyers all over the island, but there.
Well, it's a good point, Senator, that the Attorney General's Office could be armed to participate in this legislation, but once again, I'm not very optimistic. We had 107 retroactive payments, the government employees at the governor's office, what has it been, three years now? And the Attorney General was going to get on that like a duck on a June bug? And what's happened so far? So...
That's what I'm saying, that, yeah, there is a burden being put on them that we need to address, I guess.
Yeah.
If not, thank you very much, Senator Klitsky, for coming this afternoon and for your patience sitting through that first hearing. And with that, we will adjourn this hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.